Must not be any cameras here.
We're just to drive you, Chris, to receive who has to drive you home tonight?
Do you need a ride home?
Chris, that's me.
Ready? Welcome to the February 20th West Fargo City Commission meeting. First item on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. Alright, there's no changes to the agenda?
Hope to approve the agenda.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve over the minutes from the February 6th, 2017 meeting?
Make a motion to approve?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, building permits? Alright, auditors' reports? Everybody got through all those pages? Questions, comments?
I'm gonna save it for a full time so I can spend a whole week reading them. It'd be massive.
Right. Consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, on to the regular agenda. First item is a conditional use permit for a home occupation at 117 Fifth Avenue West. Tim?
Thank you Commissioner. This application was received in order to accommodate the ability to consider a home occupation, which may have customers coming to the home. The city regulates home occupations within the zoning ordinances through the provisions for home occupations found in Section 4-448. There are a number of provisions which the applicant would also be required to meet. However, the provision which requires review as a conditional use permit allows for customers coming to the home states that the city may place any conditions of the home occupation as deemed necessary to ensure that it will not be a detriment to the character and livability of the surrounding neighborhood. So essentially, we do allow customers to come to a home occupation, however, it's reviewed as a conditional use in case there's something that might have a lot of traffic. In review of the criteria for granting a conditional use permit, staff has not noted any items of concern. It was simply noted that any concerns brought forth from the neighboring property owners should be addressed by the applicant. Property owners within 350 feet were notified, and as were city departments and applicable agencies. Our city attorney would like us to ensure that the applicant maintained required state licensing. We also received two phone calls, one of which was rescinded as they had the opportunity to speak with the applicant. They also were at the public hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission and expressed support after they met with the applicant. The other was opposed to the application due to the type of business proposed and the traffic it would bring to the neighborhood. They did not submit anything in writing, nor did they come to the public hearing. The application may be considered consistent with city plans and ordinances if it is determined not to be a detriment to the character and livability of the surrounding neighborhood. At their February 13th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing, reviewed the application, and are hereby recommending approval of the application with the conditions that the applicant meet all requirements set forth in the city's provisions for home occupations, that they maintain adequate parking, which they have provided, but just to make sure that they maintain that, and that they maintain required state licensing, and that if the property is sold, the city has the ability to review and/or revoke the conditional use permit. Our conditional use permits typically stay with the property regardless of the owner. This being a type of business that, you know, it could be, you know, perceived like a salon or something like that where somebody might find a nice site to have as a business, we'd prefer that it stay with the owner. So if they change hands and ownership, we can review it or revoke it at that time. So with that, the applicant is available if you have any questions, otherwise I'm available as well.
Any questions? Tim?
The only question I might have, and I don't think it's a big deal, but it'd be helpful, do they plan on maintaining like regular daytime business type hours or?
Yeah.
Just as far as I would assume most of the neighbors probably work, and if they're not there during the day, probably won't affect their parking or anything like that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. We did discuss that at Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing. They said that it was by appointment only, and there would be a gap in between each one. We discussed the potential for being within a certain hour frame, but the planning commission didn't add that as a recommended condition. So if you feel it should be, you certainly have that within your bounds to say 6 to 10 or something like that.
I don't know if it needs to be conditioned, but it would just alleviate possible neighborhood concerns if, you know, most people are gone working 8 to 5 or something, you know?
Yeah.
If there's additional cars in the neighborhood.
With our daycares that we used to regulate as conditional use, we would have hours between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. I don't know if that's something you want to do, or if you'd like to leave it open-ended, and we could review it if it becomes a concern.
I don't think she's, you're not gonna be running business at 12 o'clock at night, right? I didn't think so. I'm good with just leaving it open for now and then worry about it if we need to worry about it.
Just make the situation better. Not a problem with it.
Well, maybe I would suggest adding a condition that the city is able to review it if complaints are received about the hours. That sound?
Yeah, we could add that as a condition if you receive complaints, like, or complaints over a period of 60 days.
That sound good?
I'm good with that.
We'll just add that to the permit that's signed and placed on the property so that kind of helps us as we deal with complaints.
Great, I'll make a motion to approve.
The recommendations?
Put the recommendations up.
A second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, Planned Unit Development Amendment for an addition onto an office building at 102 Beaton Drive West. Larry?
Yes, Your Honor, members of the commission? The area that we're looking at here is along Beaton Drive, East Beaton Drive, or excuse me, West Beaton Drive. It's an existing office building. They're looking at putting a 24 and 1/2 by 60-foot addition onto the office building beyond the north side. There's a residential neighborhood to the north of the existing building here. The proposed expansion is to make room for an additional company, or additional company vehicles, as well as providing for additional growth of the business. There are some landscaping standards that are required between the different uses, and currently there is a 6-foot board fence that separates a commercial property from the residential property to the north. We're recommending that there would be either included or preserving trees that are in the area here along the north side between the two uses. The proposed amendment is consistent with city plans and ordinances. The city land use plan depicts the area developing as office parks, so we're good there. There are four conditions that we have recommended. The Planning and Zoning Commission has approved as well, so I'd be open for any questions that the commission might have.
So this is going right on the north side?
Yes, right on the north side.
Questions?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next item on the agenda is, Chris, present the Cartograph Asset Work Management System rollout of your GOV smartphone app.
I actually came prepared with a PowerPoint for you guys tonight. However, I won't speak all day long, so. Sure, it's on this one. There goes. Well, what we have here, we've been running Cartograph for a while for the city of West Fargo. We've been using it for conditioning, inventorying, and setting condition of our assets and some work reporting. Well, recently, we've updated here about last July, August, to a newer system of this software. What the software is able to do for us, it tracks our asset, our work systems, the resources we do, any type of requests, internal and external requests, and some future budgeting items. And the assets, it has a multitude of asset sets that are available, and most of these we use. You see a list of different ones that we currently have in there, we're updating. We're trying to get information that we've been maintaining in paper files and computers, and get it out to iPads to the people in the field that use them. So they use these for their locates, if they're doing work on an item, they're gonna be able to update that information for that specific item. The screenshots are on there, actually screenshots from our version of the software. We're also able to track the work that's being done, or bring back reporting information they do. For example, right here is the month of January, snow removal on our 4 and 6-foot bike paths. You see, we spent about $3,400 in labor and equipment, makes out the rest, so it costs us about $10,000 to maintain our 4 and 6-foot pedestrian facilities for the city owns.
Just for the month of January?
Just for the month of January. So this is gonna be able to make us, you know, do some more cost analysis about how much things cost us, go back, and the conditions serve base to actually be able to tell us where we should target a lot of our efforts to work things. So it's, we'll be able to, it has a direct tie with our GIS system. We're, GIS person just started today? He's not here, but. He's gonna be helping us tremendously on this, on this whole system, just tying everything together and all the data. And like I said, the biggest thing we want to do is take this data and get it out to the people who are using it. There's, what I like about this, and I think Tina's gonna really like, is we'll be able to use a duration curves. We know how pavement performs over time, you know? It takes about 30 years for a pavement to go from perfect condition to need to be rebuilt. Well, we'll be able to take these asset inventory and the condition indexes and project out how much money we need to spend each year to maintain our roads in certain condition. We'll be able to do that with our streetlights, you know, take a look at expected lifetime of the fixtures and start planning ahead for this work that needs to get done. Instead of being reactive, try to be proactive. Just get out ahead of this stuff for the inventories. We'll be able to track resources. So I have one of our operators here, Todd Barth, that's his information down there. It tells us what he's been working on each item, how much time he spends on each item. Has all this, all this personnel, you know, his pay rates in there, his work logs, all that information, contact information. We also have a thing on the equipment there, that's a police, 2013 Ford Police Interceptor. So keeps track of all the maintenance that's been done on this, and then he schedules out any preventative maintenance that's scheduled every three, six, 12 months in advance. It's also gonna be hooked up to our fuel boy, our fuel system, so it actually downloads the mileage and anything that's keyed off on a mileage basis to be able to get that type of work scheduled. Also has requests. This is, main reason I'm here to talk to you about is that we'll be able to track requests, both internal and external. Those are just little screenshots of the software showing requests. What happens, someone puts their request, fire hydrant needs to repaint it. So that goes into requests, the person responsible for that would be the sewer and water foreman to review the request and create a work order and shift that off to as people do the work. They report back on it, goes back in the system, then we know that's been done. We also are able to do this, send it out through the citizens, be able to start engaging on there. There's a webpage and a smartphone app. So if you, if you're playing with your smartphone, you'd be able to go down to your your GOV and was in Apple Play, and I don't know, I have Google. So it's a quick little thing, I got a little video, I'll show you here. It comes with a whole thing for rolling out systems. I didn't check the sound on this. Well, it just has music, no one's talking. So. It's pretty much, this is up on our webpage. Melissa already put it up there and how to download it.
I'll send that right to you guys then, out of Public Works?
It'll come right up to Public Works, and you'll get an email saying that we received it and it was made into a work order, you'll get an email back saying it's a work order and who to contact if it does this.
You'd like us to send our requests through that too?
Oh, you know, yes, I plan to use it quite a bit myself. I, as we go forward, here's some of the outreach.
For the person?
We got information to get out to the public to put up the street signs. We have the smartphone, the next two are actually the front and back of a flyer, go out in the utility bills. So Cartograph gave us a whole, a whole series of stuff to try to get out to the people, and we have it on our webpage now also. Wait a second, let's go back here. I was gonna bring up a little sample. This is thinking here. Let's bring up the ones already open, shall we? This is your GOV, the computer, your computer version one. And what you see on there, actually, it's not coming up. Does it switch automatically? I'll go back to the other one. Either one's showing up. Well. James here? No, James. Happens all the time, doesn't it? Well. Go to your phone. I love this high-tech stuff.
Well, Chris, you've got the app. Is there also a link like on our websites for?
Yeah, the website's all on our webpage. If I can get this to come off. It's all up on our webpage now, Melissa put it out there, there now it shows up. This is the actual yourgov.cartograph.com is where it goes to. And this is a citizen facing portal that's there. On the left-hand side, you'll see wherever you zoom in the screen to back and forth, wherever it at, you'll see on, we have different spots on here where the, like right there's a request there, you click on that, it'll bring up which one it is. There's three requests over here, one over here, so like that three requests, that's my neighborhood, and it's over by my house, there's a fire hydrant in front. So you'll be able to see what your request is, what everyone else has requested. So if you're going in there and say, oh, five people already requested this, I don't have to bother with it. You'll be able to take a look at information on this right there, that's picture, so you can take a picture of the fire hydrant. So what I was gonna show here is I, I'll bring up my handy-dandy phone app. It's right here. It has a little, you have the satellite view on there, your GPS is on there, so it knows exactly where you're at. So you can be standing here, you hit a button, says I want to add a request. I can take a picture of the request. And I can just take right here? There we go. Then just take that, and then I'll just.
Got a lot of questions coming.
That's fantastic. I took the picture off, actually. But now I'll just submit that request, and it's gonna show up here ever so shortly here. Actually, I have to zoom out a little bit to get to where the city hall's at, because it picked up the location of my phone, and knows that we are post office. That's called drainage. There. There it is. See, and I just put a drainage problem right there, so it pops right up that quickly. Now, when that gets changed into a work order, it'll get an email saying the work's gonna be completed, so. That's nuts and bolts of this, and we're gonna be rolling this out pretty hard and fast, so.
There'll be a progress report like the fire hydrant, someone says, uh, needs to be painted, and you say, well, we're gonna do all the fire hydrants in a year, and you reply, does it give them the replies so they know what's going on?
Yep.
Just saying, yeah, thanks for your request.
So this way, we get all the information, first they get an email saying, thanks for requests. When any action's taken on it, they'll get an email saying that this is done, it's been made into, it's been completed, made into work order. Plus, if you fill out everything, you'll have their email, so we can contact back to you with the email.
It'll be follow-up, so they know if you are gonna do it or not gonna do it.
If we're not gonna do it, you tell them why, and if we are gonna do it, you can kind of give them a schedule when it's gonna get done.
Okay, good.
So I think, you know, make life easy for people, smartphone app, and like I said, I find it, so how many times you're driving down, I shouldn't say driving down here, you're going down the street, you see something's wrong, like Mark, you walk your neighborhood every day with your dog, you see something, you take a picture of it and send it in. And then you don't have to worry about calling, writing things down, forgetting about it.
Was it a different map, or will you incorporate into here, for instance, in the 9th Street and 13th, having a project that's being done this year? That's something that might show up there so people understand that there's work, it would be there, is that gonna be somewhere else? I mean, I think it'd be useful information that people see what's out there, planned to be done, even if it's.
I'll have to ask that question.
Even if it's planned maintenance work by the city, you plan to redo the streetlights or?
Put something in there so just so people can see it.
Trees or whatever, I think that'd be a, be a good tool for people to understand what's going on. I don't know if it can be incorporated in this or not.
I'm unsure either, bud.
It might be useful information.
They can do quite a bit, I'm sure we can get that in there somehow, so.
I'm thinking at the very least, we could, the city can drop a pin and report an issue at those sites with a description of what it was. Reverse. But as a resident, you go in there and get into that location, that blare will pop up and tell you what.
I think it'd just be nice to be proactive with people so they.
Absolutely.
They know what we've got coming up, because sometimes they don't know. I'm surprised how many people ask me about Cheyenne Street all the time, and that's been out there a million times and in the paper, and, what are you doing Cheyenne? You know, what's happening there? All those kind of things, they wouldn't, you know?
Be nice.
If they could go somewhere and find out some of that information.
It's a good thing, I'll find out somehow, we can tie the two together, so. But that's pretty much all I have, just informational, just wanted you all to know what's going on and where we're going with it, so.
I like it.
Looks good.
Great, thank you.
Great. Next on the agenda is a summary of health ordinances. Pierre?
Thank you commissioners for allowing me to speak tonight. I am just gonna give you a quick overview of the health ordinances and how we kind of got here. And I know there's some confusion at the last meeting, maybe as far as what my role is and what the health department's role is and so forth. So quickly, to go back about a year and a half, in some conversations, when I was a contract officer from the health department, I was realizing there's some health licenses that we weren't doing properly. Looking back to the ordinances, I was looking through the Board of Health issues and all those other things. And as well, we were looking about how we were paying the health department for services. And so we were looking at two mechanisms for paying the health department, one was through our levies, if I'm correct, and the other one was through a contract as well. So in a way, they're paying twice, or at least City of West Fargo is paying the health department twice. In review of that, we made some changes. We separated some of the health issues directly into the health department, some of the nuisance stuff that we would do ourselves for the city of West Fargo. And that's when I was hired, and I was hired to take over the nuisance portions of that and to not do the food or the tanning and the other health inspections that are licensed, that would remain with the health department, and I would take over the other pieces. So I know there's a lot of stuff, there's 89 pages in that packet, and I know it's really hard to kind of go through each piece, line by line, what was crossed out, what was put in. I welcome any questions, and also feel free to reach out to me in my phone, by email or whatever, and I'd be more than happy to go through any of those pieces and kind of explain the history. It's not simple, there's a lot of things in there, there's inconsistencies, and one, Chapter 15 is a whole health chapter, and then in each section, like in the food one, it would have permits. And the next one, tanning, would talk about licenses and everything else. It wasn't consistent, so I made all of that consistent according to the health ordinances by the state. So they're all licenses that are handed out, so I made sure that was consistent all the way across the entire chapter. Did the same thing with health department or the public health department. We can't have a city health officer, so I just made sure that I helped massage that language and worked with the attorney to make sure that was all correct and in order as well, so.
Did we do first reading last, was that what we did last time, John?
You guys maybe know, but just to review, as you know, we used to have a line item for public health we were paying, which, after a little research, we found out the century code requires counties to provide health units. So, and they can contract with an entity to do it, so they had actually contracted CAS public health to provide those. So we don't have our own health department and never, never really have, so we were actually paying for something we, by state law, we didn't need to. So that levy has dropped off, and I think about the time we hired Pierre to handle a lot of our inspections. So I think a lot of the updates he's done to the ordinances are to get us in line with how the health department actually conducts business. So it's, you know, something that was, it was a time ago. I don't think we intend on having a health department soon, so I think it's a good thing to update it. You're right, it looked like significant changes, but you're right, we had to align with who's providing our public health services, and that's Fargo CAS.
Correct. And in Chapter 10, which was our licensing section, we had licensing of body art, licensing of food service, and licensing of soft serve service. And I've asked those to be removed because we don't license those, and then made sure that language that was appropriate was back in Chapter 15 as far as how the health department regulates that. So it was, you know, looking and mirroring Fargo's ordinances, because technically, those are the ones that they're gonna follow, we just wanted to make sure we give them the same jurisdictional authority here in West Fargo and go from there, so.
And that should be fairly consistent with Cas County, because Cas County contracts with Fargo.
Good. Any else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Pierre.
Thanks, Pierre.
Alright, next, Water Improvement Project Number 1302, Dustin.
Thank you. Last meeting, we discussed the two water tanks that we proposing to do an improvement project this year, basically a maintenance recoding project. At that meeting, there were a series of questions asked, and we said we'd come back with follow-up and provide information. I think I'll avoid reading through this technical memorandum here, but in general, the type of coatings that we would be specifying, they are durable, they last a long time, they're relatively maintenance-free. We did cite an instance in Rochester, Minnesota, where they've, they put this performance-grade coating on, and it's been 13 years since they've had to do any pressure washing, for example. There was concern with the, that off-white color with the two-tone scheme that we're proposing. One thing to don't would be, any of the mildew, that staining that occurs, generally occurs in the haunches of the tank, which is, you know, just at the top of the stem where that transition is, which is where the, not where the white color would be. So it wouldn't, again, we're not as concerned with the white presenting, you know, that dirt a little more viewable to the general public. In terms of cost, there was relatively no cost difference from going to a two-tone, but there is a cost added when we get to something like a logo. The logo that we're proposing is a traditional City of West Fargo logo. We anticipate it would be anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000. Have these, basically three logos per tank. Have these, basically three logos per tank. Again, relatively inexpensive, but that's where the cost certainly comes into play. In terms of the, I think the question came out with being a sphere on the top of the tank, will the square logo be distorted? And there is potential for that. However, generally, the installer takes that into consideration when they lay that out. One thing that we can do is put in our specifications that we want to see a stencil drawn out before we start painting it, so that we can just make sure that visually, this thing isn't going to really look odd. And we can, at that point, cancel the logos if we needed to, or make adjustments. So, all in all, I think we're still back to the question on, is there a preference from the commission in terms of a lighter green as the base color or a darker green? From the technical side, the engineers have recommended that lighter green. And I think the only drawback with the darker green is that you can get that thermal stratification. But again, we're planning to add a mixer in the tank to keep the water from forming those stratifications. So, I don't think going with a dark color is going to present any negative impacts. But on that, again, we're not looking for emotion. We're just, any comments that you have and/or concurrence that we should proceed with the two-tone and the labels.
How much did you say per logo?
Well, per tank, it would be about ten to twenty thousand dollars. And there's three logos per tank, so. And the reason for the three is to try to catch all sides.
What's Water Towers?
The Better Ridge Water Tower, and then the Water Tower that's on Twelfth Avenue over by the soccer fields.
What, the brand-new one?
The, oh, we're doing the logos on that as well. The new one is being constructed.
What'd you do, a similar color scheme? They haven't put it up and painted it yet.
Nope, that's a different tower design itself, that's got a concrete pedestal.
Yeah, the top is steel.
The top would be an off-white with the colored logo.
You're looking for our recommendation then on color?
Yep.
You could get three different answers here. I like medium, I like medium green.
I think the light, yeah, I think the light green looks weak for some reason. I don't think it's going to, in my personal opinion, I think it's, I don't know if that's the right word or not, but it's, I, not bold, me. I don't know if the dark, dark green is the right answer either, but...
That's why I like medium green. I think the logos are skewed in their little picture, that that's just the way they're...
Yeah, that's part of putting that in a rendering. But I think that's what we're looking for, though. If the two-tone or the color scheme itself just does not look right, and you're really wanting us to go back, again, it's an open canvas. We can try to do something as unique as an oddball design, you know, all the way up, or we can go a solid color. Generally, we, I know we're not interior designers, exterior designers, but...
I'm good with any of the colors, to be honest with you guys. Honestly, I think it's important that we probably put, so everybody knows which city they're in. I guess, for lack of a better, to put that up on the water tower, but...
Perfect. That's... Don't surprise us with the color.
Maybe somewhere's in between what Mark likes.
I think that's what's going to work.
Mark likes and what you're suggesting, somewhere's in between that.
I do like the two-tone, that look, it looks nice. And I think the logos would be better when they, I'd like, I kind of agree. I don't like that real lighter green.
You're going to do three logos on a tower?
Yeah.
Really?
It kind of helps cover, so they know where they're at. Each direction.
Right. We're good?
Good, we're good to move on.
Next item on the agenda, create assessment district for infrastructure replacement, District number three-zero-zero-one, Dustin.
I'm going to kick this one off, commissioners. As we're looking, this is the first of our planned reconstruction projects in our core area of town. This is First Avenue from about Fifth Street East to about Ninth Street East. This is the area that the sewer has failed. Many parts of it, the big pieces of the clay tile are missing. There's vertical offsets that we can't jet or camera. It's pretty much a mess out there. The sewer out there could last two days, two months, two years. I'm not really sure what it is, but we do know it's in bad shape and it needs to get reconstructed. So, when we start taking a look at these older core areas of town, we know that the sewer's old, the water main needs to get replaced. So, we're looking at a full reconstruction in this area. So, the schedule for this, we've also scheduled a public meeting for the, for all the adjoining property owners along this area. We are looking at, it is March seventh, we're going to have a meeting for that to discuss this. Not saying that anyone in the area is going to be happy. Part of the other different areas to go with this is, part, there's going to be a little bit of street widening. If you're familiar with that area, First Avenue is very narrow, there's parking allowed on one side. We're going to be adding about five feet to it. And we're concerned about the ability to actually have that section protested out. So, we're, we want to put forward a proposal that the city would pick up the amount for the street widening. And that'd be estimated to be less than a hundred thousand dollars at this time. There's other items go along with the project, would be street lighting, boulevard work, and replacement of the sidewalks, which we want to do, the authorize a resolution necessity for those items. I guess Dust and I are both available for questions. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Dustin?
I think you covered it.
So, it's a concerning area, that our infrastructure in our core of town is on the verge of failing. And we're looking at doing a large study to prioritize all the work in that core area. And I'm looking between like Maine and liberally, I'm going to say Thirteenth Avenue, stuff close to Thirteenth Avenue's newer. But between there, the river, and probably Ninth Street, and that entire area, is we're going to be trying to evaluate and prioritize over the next, you know, ten years, replacement schedule.
One thing I maybe would add, Chris, is that Chris has his crew out there, they're televising the line again. They have televised it in the past, but they wanted to collect some data for our public meeting. And then they're also going to be bringing in samples of the failing clay pipe. There are significant stretches where the clay pipe has completely disintegrated. So, there's really only a natural channel, an earth channel where the sewer is flowing today. So, they're going to try to bring in some of this stuff, so that we can provide a visual for the public that might be a little more effective than just taking Chris or I's word for it. And I think that'll be good.
You're doing two meetings on the seventh, or just one?
There'd be two separate meetings. One is for the public meeting to, for the sewer project. And the second meeting's going to be for the traffic calming in Nineteenth Avenue in that neighborhood. So, we are looking for a type of motion we're looking for?
With this, there's actually a series of motions relating to the creation of the assessment district, and then authorizing the engineer to proceed with plans and specs, let's see, and approving the engineer's report, and authorizing the proceeding with the resolution necessity for the sidewalk portion of the project.
We do it all in one motion together?
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Comments, so the people out there know this doesn't mean it's a done deal, like I said, not having the public meeting after. This is just one step in several to...
Exactly, just for the, we're trying to expedite the process, to make sure we have an early enough bid date for a good price. If everything falls apart and we decide not to do that, we're only at risk for a set of plans. So, it's not precluding the final answer of actually do bid the project or not. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Great. Matt, next item on the agenda, list city property left over from Seventeenth Street East, realign.
Thank you, Commissioner Wentz and Commission, all that's left of you.
Chris messed it up for you.
He did, he...
Should make sure James is in there.
Yeah, well, or Tim, don't let him go home. Tim's is our junior James. Sometime back, we realigned Seventeenth Street. And on the, when we realigned it, we maintained ownership of the old roadbed. We currently have, that's not working. This portion right here is still our property. We have utilities that run through there. The issue is, we didn't purchase this portion of the property. And what's happened in the past is that when people have come in to try to do something with that portion of the property, they can't. By the time they add a setback and then lot coverage and building, they run out of, run out of space to do anything there. And so, way back when Jim was still the city administrator, we had discussed the possibility of selling this piece, so that someone could utilize that piece. Now, this blue area would only be used for parking, but it would allow them to fully utilize the piece of property to the right. And so, my request today is an approval for the city to go ahead and list the property with a commercial real estate agent. I don't think the property's worth very much money, if anything, being that we're not going to allow the easement to go away or the ability for us to have our utilities under there. But I would like to get the process started. We have some entrusted parties in the property.
There's a high line that goes over that. That creates a big problem, too, as far as putting any structures or anything there.
Yeah, it's been looked at many times, and by the time people set buildings on and comply with the ordinances, it drinks them right out of a spot to go.
When the state realigned that road, did they, that little lots to the east of there, to the right side, those are privately owned now? Did they sell that, the state give?
No, so, and I'm going to let Chris or anyone else who knows more about this than I do, since this was before me, jump in at any time. But based on my understanding, this, right over Larry's head there, that property owner right there is the one who sold us their property. So, they actually own this square right here. And hypothetically, we did a really good job of not buying any more land than we absolutely need. But the problem is, we left a piece of property that's not worth a whole lot now. And all we do to our piece of property is continually maintain it. It's a strip of grass, we've got to go out and mow all the time, we're not using it for anything. So, as long as we can still keep our infrastructure under there, it might be worth it to just let it go.
I think it makes sense to not keep it. I mean, there could be a limited market for it, obviously. I mean, you can't put anything on there except cars, parking. But I think, I think we should move on from that. Won't need it.
I agree. We can put it to use.
I'll make that motion to...
And I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Thanks, Matt.
Sorry I didn't use any awesome terms like haunches of the tank. Learned a new one today.
All right, now, do we need to adjourn to go into executive session, or?
No, actually, we need a motion and a second to go into executive session for the purposes of attorney-client consultation regarding the claim from Northern Improvement and potential litigation related to Twelfth Avenue project. And we'll be coming back into the regular session after the executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no, I thought that they were staying. Oh, so you're, so I'm not, my dad, my brother's going to get pulled.
A pick and choose, which one's I go to?
She went to one and nobody ever had it. And they want to sell.
It will be cut off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, she was kind of... There's an advertisement for it. Yeah, I went to interact, I was like, did you get it together? And she's like, they wanted to sell it. I was over there, and you just got like thrown over. I did my, uh, the guy, he was trapped. Oh, yeah, yeah. She's not going to print an icon. Yeah, because they, they have like, their baby, like the whole, like the logo on the top. And it's like half of this guy.
Wow, that's effective. Well, that's like, that's...
Yeah, the site plan would be really good, because it's low gear. I'm going to go, actually, I'm going to show it to you.
By the way?
It's a target.
Keep me out of trouble, give her the site plan. Right now, what we have is we have like... Yeah, I, so, you know, on the south side.
Let me go get my luck.
I just want the one that kind of where you can see, like, oh, it would be right next to Bonanzaville and...
Because we have other, like, insights, where what they have is like, well, here's hypothetical. And there is raging debate over, oh, what? I'll put that out there, tell me now.
Yeah. I'm just going to say that they own about three hundred acres. And I want to check that, because, so it's considered, right now, it's considered rural property in Casco. That I heard. Okay. And, you know what, I don't think I've checked it really. You prefer Matt or Matthew?
Mr. Matthew.
Literally, I don't. Whatever's convenient at a day, well, like, if you remember Matthew or Matt, yeah, I'll take.
Hey, um, do you guys know they...
On. No way.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Yeah. They own that. Who was CJ?
You did?
Yeah, well, it was CJ, and I didn't really know, but, like, well, I don't know. I think for an SC, or, whatever. Anyway, I'll be on the back. And, next. March seventh, around that time.
And so, I heard about it, but there's... So, if you got deployed, oh, two. On the coast. They burn all the garbage. And so they just have these. All the time and of course. I never. Oh, even something for the. He was stationed outside of a. I have someone. But he had a. He burned everything. Literally every type of garbage they don't have. And. If. And how they're attributing all these. Twenty-sixty-five thousand service. That come back. Out of these. They have. Very cool. Any more than anything.
Hey, I'm already telling everybody.
Oh. Yeah, you have. The worst, so, the worst part of. So.
Oh, you're talking about your Valentine's Day, smacking down from your wife.
Yeah. So. When we first got married, when we were dating, before we were married. Or my wife, that's a. Well, I just didn't want like, all that. When we first get my old girlfriend, all of them. And I'd find myself every. Air. Don't be dropping, wah, this is all this, that's so great. And so.
You think they were around them now?
I did, I did not. And so I started dating my wife and I knew immediately. Like, I'm starting to stop. Then I started bashing Valentine's Day, like, day one in July. I hate this place. It's not a real. It's not a real holiday, yada, yada. And so. We've been married all years. All our dating and marriage, I've never done. Nothing. And so.
As you said.
Yes.
I'm, I promise to not be a jerk.
But I think my theory is, why do you have a special day? Be good husband all the time. So, I'm telling Tina's.
But you did. There's no reason that you can't. True. Okay. True, yeah.
So Tina, so Tina's asking me about this. Tina's asking me about this, what we're doing for Valentine's Day. And I go off on my whole thing about, I'm so proud of myself. I don't have to do anything because I, I treat my wife well all year round and I love her very much. There's no reason to have a special day.
It's part of the.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm going on and on, like, ten minutes later, I get this email forwarded from my wife where my wife's friend's husband writes this long, like, gut-wrenching email. But you know, and he used to be a fan of Hallmark Comedy. Of an A B. I serve because she's got two children on the Irons Road. Just goes on and on. And I forwarded to Tina, I go, you don't know this story, but this just underscores how big an asshole. It's awful. You wanna know something? My wife got flowers.
Did she?
Oh, yeah, she did.
From the grocery store? Were you one of those sad?
Whatever was left, I got that day.
I loved going to the grocery store at like, seven o'clock on Valentine's.
And watch people like me.
Like at five, and you just see all these people, like, with the big burly, like, camouflage coat and dirty clothes. Ashamed. They're carrying out flowers and like.
Yep, that was you.
This is my favorite thing. I heard.
Apparently you have to buy dog meat stuff for your daughter too.
Buy for your dog.
Yes. I'm a good dad, aren't you? I gotta avoid that too.
Good dad. That's so much on the Matt side.
You might be the odd man on a. For a lot, medium?
Okay.
Do I care? Yeah, no.
What I was going to tell you is that.
Answered no?
I'm going to do something.
I know you don't. No, I, uh.
Yeah, well.
No, I just, I have the thing at eight o'clock tomorrow morning.
If that's the part that the city can see. Yeah.
That's gotta be.
No. But I think that's.
And we can kick it, like, I just have me. Ten, so like, we start at nine, I just gotta get it.
That, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna have to be.
I'm gonna work.
I'll probably.
Cause then I have, yeah, so I have maybe eleven.
It's gonna be a long-term education.
I'm just.
And so it's gonna. You could like, you could do something to it on the.
It's tough, tough to, tough to decide who you vote for, who you root for there. Well, I'm gonna have my, my Blackcocks jersey on. My wife will have her Wild jersey on. And we're taking the truck with the Blackcocks plates. So I'm pretty sure that well.
Yeah, you know, so this alcohol thing.
How are they gonna make any money?
That, I don't think that's the point, you know.
But they at least gotta break. I think part of it is. Home is our, our special. We don't work for.
Actually, I have that in there.
We don't work for the people. And that's the issue. I mean, if you have.
I was like, of course it's.
Yeah.
So I will say that.
Is all about it.
Though looking at the future.
What ends up happening, like, they want.
Yeah, yeah.
Fridays at late night. About Harlan. Harlan isn't.
And we have. And that gives.
But, you know, sends up the most expensive. Or hates it, because they, you know, it's expensive. Every Friday. And so. Because the whole conversation, you hear the word beard again, we're good. So what's, what I'm trying to. Some. Some for you. I don't. And so. It, it really is for all of the. You know, is it in our messages?
Fine, is this? Also.
I don't think.
It is.
I should ask. Hypothetically, they may get pretty far. And we should.
That would probably get.
So my theory is, let's just get ahead. Be good. And. I get it. I get a request in my head, usually, by somebody saying. It either happens without us knowing. I don't think that's.
Where is it?
You know, puts in a memory. And so all I'm looking for is, would there be a way to allow.
Actually, I don't know.
There. Limits. And have. Or five of these. And have people walk in. Because they're a retailer. We don't want you.
That's a lot of sales.
You get good people, basically, walking.
That's got feeling, really.
We limit it to a certain number. I think so. Yeah, I mean. Oh, it was hypothetical, going into the establishment that happens to sell motor vehicles, selling beer, S-Drives. Right. No, I agree. You know, I told. I'm just saying hypothetically. I told Beyond Running, what I wanna do. Use you as a. And let's figure out, like I said, I'm running. I don't think that's good. I don't think it's good for us. Liquor license in most farboys, like, what, eighty-nine bucks? In Farboys, three hundred thousand. Maybe we're looking at the liquor license.
It's a beer for the pair.
Hey, hey, hey.
You know, galleries give you. It's Monday.
No, I, when you look at that approach. I mean, that's my, that's my point. Like, I don't, I don't, I'm not there to advocate for. I just don't wanna go to Marshalls on a Saturday morning with my three-year-old while some guys carry beer around crack shopping. I just wanna be able to at least go somewhere or somebody I can. I was gonna say church. It's a church. Yeah. Speaking of that, did I show you my video where my son catches? I was wondering where you're going with that, man. This is my, uh. August, he's so excited. We went to Devil's Lake. Why is this so?
She's very personally person. And gets at the. And she gets like, over sleep.
No point kidding for him. I think it was like a shark. What was this? Oh, really? I went upstairs and. Which I. And I got a two child. And we didn't catch. He caught it with like a Snoopy fishing rod.
They don't have.
Yeah.
He, she doesn't get interested until.
That's what she.
Until the fish comes out.
That's what it's like when you fish with a one and a half. Yeah, yeah, you're lucky the one and a half will doesn't. Be sticking out a little bit. And look at the size of that thing. It was, it was. Oh, so, yeah, so I bet all the way home. Said, oh, wants to go fishing. He doesn't, he's such a gamer. Yeah, it's not even, he's so serious about it. The biggest issue is that, like, he watches the Backstar. He was getting so frustrated the day before, cause we didn't purge. Well, I, I hook and. We've not. Otter's like, what, this early? After all, sort of a lottery, she's gotta throw down the whole kitchen. You weren't inside. Oh, yeah. It's been ten, oh, when I. Oh. That's it. That's awesome. Yeah, he, he was so excited that later, he's seen me measure fish before. So I, he grabs my tape measure, he's out there, he doesn't even know, like, the numbers, I was out there measuring them up. Six inches. Oh, my God, let's see. But like the day before, it was pretty. Here we go. Look at, have, I'd have three or four. I'm assuming first come. We could pull them up off the bottom and. Four or five feet. And we talked to a bunch of people. Just you and the kids went up there? Oh, don't let my wife hear something like that. Oh, I.
Well, if you like, I could write it for you. It was totally.
But on the flip side, I started with August when he was here. Which it was totally ass, but now he is darn near. Really? I'm not right. And I'm hopeful that. You're, you're hopeful that. My God. I cannot believe that's reputation, let alone. Worst is when I'm in the department meeting, totally not my fault. We have this department meeting every Wednesday and whenever it's my.
Don't tell her about that, just start looking around on her.
There is like, oh, Matt's turn. In my defense is that I don't talk, I just open up the topic and listen to you argue for thirty minutes. And I go, so what was the answer?
Really?
Yeah.
That's how I see those.
I don't remember a big.
Matt Marshalls, yeah.
Like all.
Matt dumps the chemical in there and stirs up the pot.
Watch this, this came out in next year's corner.
Oh, it's right immediately, Chris is, most of the time it's like, so, uh. Kind of like, kind of business, they don't wanna stop, like. And they go on and on and on, and then you get, you know, opportune time, like.
What if, what if Chris just?
Oh, my. He's, he does, he works with me, so I asked for a stoplight.
In a perfect world, the residents, somebody ask for stoplights on the roundabout. And then a very nice resident, explaining to them the concept of the.
At Devil's Lake though. They say. Yeah, they say that. Really slim. But. This is my first time. I've never. Well, I've driven. There are literally several culture. Well, I'll tell you, I'm trying a lot this. Everybody I talk to. I think part of it was that, well, I want to. In December. The cold, late season. Exactly. Which is good. Be good is not gonna be. And for other. Well, even at Devil's, it wasn't that. It was good. And I mean, on Sunday. Had up in the. Heard it all.
I have a question. Somebody asked me why, um, why it's, why it's Knights. Ninety-four and then veterans, why we didn't just rename the whole street? Or.
Our street was already.
Our street was already.
Next street.
Next street.
Yeah, sure.
Or far. Or is. Or request. Having considered. Well, in, in the main reason. Prior to whoever, whoever. Whoever. Were divided. As.
Yeah.
But you're a guy. And. And. Or just.
Yeah.
That's good.
And then.
There was. Questions. I wouldn't have been like.
Here's the years before. What was even?
They didn't, they didn't probably. Actually.
What are you gonna? I'm gonna name a whole lot worse.
What are you really?
Nothing like that.
What are you really, you do entertain?
The WestFargo Sanford.
If you put a cent away. For you. If I was a cent giant. How much money do you need to? For us? Yeah. So then there was some thought, oh, well, should we? Should she?
Yeah.
It was. Also it's easy because.
Yeah.
Point north. Yeah.
Yeah.
There's not many.
That was. If you.
Oh, I'm.
What do you? Roll with that? Thank you. I don't know, cause he was thinking.
Yes. Hey, Carolyn. What is the red light? The giant light for?
I think that. On the red light.
Offer on.
On. Yeah, I think it does when it's. And. Uh, police department.
Or a lady.
Actually, losers kinda wanna take somebody off. Laser beams right in the eyes. That non-lethal laser beam eyes. No, it's lethal, we just have a center stone.
That's what really happened.
Star Trek.
The firehouse subs on veterans. That. He, um, she picked that location and wrote to corporate firehogs and said, I'm gonna build here, and they tried to talk her out of it. They like dissertation together that, that talked about why it's a good location. Number, number one location. I would be like, mic drop, I'm done working for the rest of my life. I, did I call that or what?
Yeah, if I'm firehouse subs, I'll call her, look, could you pick?
No, they're all worse.
Pick all of the spots?
What's that?
If I'm firehouse subs, I'm gonna hire her to pick all of the spots.
Absolutely. And then an upper. Essential to the city. And a double double.
Doing handsome pier chains. What an Ikea, cause those meat bowls are awesome. Give you one in Ikea.
Yes.
Believe me, because that's why I'm driving to Miami, I still relatives. Crap. I get to throw in a hot one at night until I go. What would you show them to stay out?
I eat throw.
You guys have a party? Yeah. Yeah.
I eat throw.
We didn't think you're actually coming back. And help me, help me and my hunches get up. Yeah, no, no. My hunches, I saw it.
I would please, yeah, yeah. Wow, you could stay. And then I kept going and.
Got you, got you.
After my son.
Can't roll all that? Doing it. No, we have.
I don't know, I'll have to ask Cam.
Great, John, do we need a motion to reconvene?
Yeah, it would be a motion to authorize me to prepare a settlement agreement, uh, pursuant to terms and conditions we discussed in the executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Tina. Any updates for us?
Good evening, commissioners, I really don't have, um, a whole lot, I was. Was preparing for this other stuff, I will be working on some information. For the library as far as their building fund they wanna work on, I'll be contacting you more, Dwayne, and we'll. Work on that, right now, we've just been working on, um. The clerk of courts position, I believe those. That has closed and we've got a number of applications for that. So we'll be, Jenna will be working on that, we're also working on the draft, redrafting of the, um. Checking through the, the job description for the chief of police to make sure that we've got everything up to date. And then we'll be getting ahold of you to let you know, um, the options that we have available for. For our search for a new chief of police. Other than that, we've been working on legislative items and trying to keep ahead of the craziness down in Bismarck and. Just. Going day by day, our new GIS person started today, I think everyone's pretty excited. To have him on board and, um, there, there's gonna be a core group of Chris from Public Works, he's under the IT department, but Chris from Public Works. Tim from planning and Nick from assessing are gonna be the core group that, that works with him on a, like a weekly basis and. Make sure that he's on track and that all the needs are being met and. And all those kinds of things, so we're really excited about the plan going forward, so. Do you have any questions for me? Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve or to adjourn rather.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.